I'd like to call our Thursday, May 16th, for the area schools, school board meeting to order. Member Clark, could you please take a roll call?
Member Christiansen is here, member Corcoran.
Here.
Member Haglund.
Here.
Member Peterson.
Here.
Member Rayfield.
Here.
Member Rebling.
Here.
Member Tyson is absent.
All right, we have motion to approve the meeting agenda, so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's approved. Are there any items that people would like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve 4-1 through 4-3? So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five action items. 5-1, school board meeting calendar adjustment. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administration is recommending a movement from the scheduled June 20th school board meeting, midnight school board meeting, to move that to a week earlier, June 13th. Administration makes that recommendation.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the meeting calendar adjustment?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to know how he has him.
Okay. When would that?
June 13th.
June 13th.
Okay.
This is a work session.
We're good.
It's important.
We're good. Sorry about that. I didn't give it much thought until you said you would also be gone, but any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The change is approved. 5-2, seasonal grounds position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Administration is recommending an adjustment to the wage for summer ground. And the way in which we'd recommend that we do that is we create a seasonal grounds position, allowing us to move from an established rate of $14 an hour to $16.50 per hour. This is seasonal work that would essentially be roughly 65, 67 days, eight hours per day. These are at well employees over the 13-week summer period. We currently have a number of open positions, struggling to get them filled. In order to staff with all the fields that we lease through facilities to the community and maintain our building grounds, we need, frankly, need to raise the rate in order to be more competitive with this rate. So administration would recommend that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Discussion? These are like mowing positions and...
They'll take their direction from custodial person working grounds. These are simply largely college kids who are both looking for seasonal work. And again, in order to be more competitive with other type positions in the community, I'm sure we need to raise that rate.
It is a voice vote sufficient?
I would recommend a...
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion?
I'm just curious, do we feel that $16.50 will be competitive?
We, well, yeah, much more than our current rate.
Understood.
Yeah.
I just know that the pressure out there for seasonal labor in the summer is quite high and, you know.
Yeah, I think we're good with that. We've studied that, and if we need to raise the bar, we'll come back.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, member Clark, could you please take a roll call?
Member Tyson is absent, member Christiansen votes yes, member Corcoran.
Aye.
Member Haglund.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Yes.
Member Rebling.
Aye.
Ayes.
All right. Nothing on new business. Seven school board work session, enrollment and housing policy, housing projection study. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Roughly five years ago, maybe six years ago, Hazel Reinhardt worked with us to do an enrollment study and the subsequent housing analysis. That study stretched through 2025, and we feel that given the work ahead of us as a district, staying up to date with relevant data and analysis on enrollment trends, as well as housing trends and the housing analysis, is really critical and tangible. So roughly six months ago, we commissioned a work proposal to do that work, providing a lot of enrollment data, historical data, and asked her to provide a report to the district. And she's done that and is here tonight to present the results of that study. Hazel?
Thank you. I'm going to sit down, I'm going to be very lazy. Get comfortable. Thank you very much, Superintendent and board members for having me. I've actually done work in Forest Lake School District Public Schools, I think 15, 16 years, a long, a long time. So. Let me just tell you a couple of things about myself, since people seem to be fascinated by that. I've been working in the field of demography for many, many years, in fact, probably longer than some of you have been on this earth. I started out at, I have a PhD in history, which doesn't have much to do with this, other than, as I tell people, I'm still of a generation of women who were not encouraged to do much in math. And it took me into my middle years of life before I realized that I really liked to work with numbers. So I stumbled into the area of demography quite by accident. I started out at the University of Wisconsin in Madison at a center of applied population and community analysis, which is still in existence. I then became the first Minnesota demographer, state demographer, and there are only three, so. And that was some time ago. Then I went on and worked in the media business, I set up my own consulting business, and since 1991, the only population work I do is school enrollment projections, two other population work. And I have worked in probably about 200 school districts, primarily in the Midwest, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, South Dakota, North Dakota, Colorado. So I've seen a lot of school enrollment projections. So what I'd like to do tonight is to share with you the key findings and then the data that back that up, and then move on to projections. That sounds good. I don't tend to lose my train of thought, but if I'm going to come to something later, I'll say, you know, so if you want to interrupt me, you can't, that's what I'm saying, if I say something too outrageous. The first thing I want to start with to say is that the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic still linger, and some districts have recovered better than others, and there's some lingering effect here. It's, I think, still has a little impact on your kindergarten size, and you had some shift of students to homeschool especially, and that has not dropped back. I've seen districts where it's dropped back to what it was pre-pandemic, but it has not here. And you've had an increase in non-public enrollment that has not fully dropped back to pre-pandemic levels either. And then, before we start into talking about projections, I want to talk a little bit about the environment, because I find that many people, it's very easy for us to think of the world as sort of when we came of age and we don't move forward into what's happening now. And there's some really critical things that affect school enrollment. And the number one big issue is the decline in fertility, which means there are just fewer kids being born, which means there are fewer kids in the pipeline five and six years from now to enter school. This is, it's really a big deal. Two days ago, the Wall Street Journal had a front page article pointing out that fertility rates are below replacement, we now believe globally. And so there are enormous implications for labor force, for all kinds of things down the road, but we're going to see it come up very quickly in school enrollment. And the significance of that comes down to, it ties in with the aging of the population, and that is that households are going to have fewer school-aged children. And that's a key thing, and a much higher percentage of households are not going to have kids. Right now, we're probably running, on average, maybe about 30, 31, 32% of households have school-aged kids, and that's going to drift downward. So that has implications as well. So births have just, they became depressed after the Great Recession of 2008, and a little bit of bounce back, not as much as we thought. COVID took it down more, and it just seems now to be hovering, it fell, births fell again in 2023. So that's something that we have to keep in mind. We have less mobility in population. Since World War II, about 20% of all households changed their address every year. Now we're down to less than 10%. So people are staying put, and the practical implication of that is simply that we always think that housing units are going to turn over, and there are going to be young families with kids. Well, they do turn over, but not nearly at the rate that we think they're going to do. But most people stay in housing units probably pretty much to their 80s, unless it's a super huge house, but even then. And usually, movement is triggered by the death of a spouse or partner. And because economically, many people are finding that it's economically advantageous to stay in their existing home as opposed to moving into something new. So my point is that when you put together these things, and then immigration from abroad has slowed, that probably doesn't affect this district a lot, but it does affect Minnesota. You put that all together, we have much slower growth. That's what we're looking at. And of course, the state is back to a pattern of losing population to migration, that is, that more people move out every year than move in, and that's especially true of younger people. So of course, we're losing that potential fertility in births as well. And then finally, the school environment and educational choices are very competitive in Minnesota, and there is nothing on the horizon that says it's going to be less competitive. So that's kind of the environment in which we're working. Okay, what are the key findings? Well, I looked at enrollment for 10 years, and because trends don't occur in one or two years, to have a trend, you have to have a period of time. And this is key, really, really key. The estimated school-aged population in the district has decreased in 10 years. The estimate here is 41, I can't say it's 41 to be absolutely sure, but I can tell you, it has not grown. So you're looking at an environment in which you're not having the growth of school-aged kids. And as a result of that, of course, you have resident enrollment decline, total enrollment decline. Non-residents make up about 11% of your enrollment. You know that you're in a very competitive environment, you had a net loss of students, and you have a market share of 61.7%, which is a low market share for a district, your size and where you're located in the metro area. But the key thing, no growth in school-aged population. Now, interestingly, and in a positive, optimistic note, in the past four years, you've had net in-migration into your schools after more than a decade of net out-migration. So I think we're beginning to see a trend now of stabilizing of the district getting net in-migration into the public schools. The other big issue is there is a significant change in the geographic location of students in this district, significant. And the projections really point to it becoming even more severe, to a point, I would say, of being a real challenge. The Forest Lake Public Schools' share compared to charter schools, the data suggests that that is stabilizing, it is stabilized. What I would alert you to, that in the world of competing for students, if there are fewer students, whether those charters have open spaces and they become even more aggressive, you know, that could happen. But it looks like it has stabilized at this point. So here, we're looking at the school-aged population. We're looking, starting from 2013, 14, and the estimate was 8,142. The highest number occurred the following year at 8,239. The estimate for '23, '24, 8,101. It bounces around a little bit, which you saw in the 10-year period, the high, so it's really very, very flat. If we look at the change in other options, what I'm showing you here is the 2013, 14, then the year before the pandemic, and then the most current year. And as you can see in the non-public, between pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, you had an increase of, you know, about 70, 80 kids to non-public. You see about a 100 increase in homeschool, actually a little decline in open enrollment out, and basically stability with the charters numbers. And then here, I can't get another column out, the smaller number is charter enrollment, and the larger number is Forest Lake Public Schools. But here's the point that I made, that if you look at the last three years, even you could stretch to the last four years, you had a stabilization of that share. And then here, I'm comparing, these are from 2022, the most recent data statewide, so that you can see the percent of students in your district going to traditional non-public schools, brick-and-mortar schools, compared to statewide average homeschools, which you can see, you're in homeschool belt in the state of Minnesota, higher percentage of students that go to attend homeschool than in other parts of the state. You can see open enrollment, you're a little higher in and out from the statewide average, but it's that charter school, 18.4% versus 7% statewide.
Hey, when you look at Forest Lake compared to other districts you analyzed, how many other districts have proximity of charter schools, with us having two charter schools in the heart of our district? Do you see that in other districts?
Well, where it's most pronounced, of course, is Minneapolis. Now St. Paul following, not nearly as severe as Minneapolis. It's pretty rare to have this. Most districts, even with pretty healthy charter schools, maybe at 7%, 8%. You know, it's, this is just really, it's unusual, atypical. There are some of the big districts, if you think of Millcay, Hennepin, South Washington, 196 Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, these are these huge, huge suburban districts. They have very little competition. So, so no, you are, you know, atypical. Oh, well, okay, here, I just wanted to show you the numbers, really, of the non-residents. You can see over a 10-year period, you're back to where you were 10 years ago, it's moved around, but. Now, this chart is important, significant, and school enrollment is a subset of population, because in every state, although the age varies, education is compulsory. Minnesota is from age 6 through 16, although most Minnesota students start school at age 5 for kindergarten. And on the right, you see the numbers of year-over-year change and the percentage. And then the two left-hand columns, natural increase/decrease, is the difference between the size of the incoming class, kindergarten class, compared to the previous year's grade 12. When you see these negative numbers, that puts downward pressure on your enrollment change, growth, and before you can have growth from new housing, whatever, you've got to overcome, if you will, that natural decrease. And then the net migration, that is the movement across either school boundaries or from non-public to public charter to whatever. And here you see that we had way back 13, 14, it was a plus 29, then we had a bunch of negative numbers, and now you see 71, 158, 64, 98. So then for the decade as a whole, we have 110 compared to that minus 1,051, which results in a net change of 904 students. See how that works? But that natural decrease, I want you to keep that in mind, because that's a big factor, and it's affecting most districts. Now here, I've just laid out the enrollment, if you don't want to focus on it, but I just want to tell you, I tend to look across the top line about what's happening to kindergarten class size, and 2022, '23 was extraordinarily low. This year, it's bounced back, it's still, we'll see the percentage is probably still a little bit low. You look down the rightmost column, and you can see that your middle school and high school grades are larger. Now, part of that is augmented, we'll see by a net inflow of students in grade 7 and grade 9. But basically, it starts to tell us that, you know, enrollment is likely to decline because those lower grades are smaller. And then if you look at the diagonal, that's how we look at migration. So in 2013, 14, there were 484 kindergarten students, and in 2023, '24, that cohort would be in grade 10, and there were 487. And it moves around with the intervening years. Now, I'm going to make projections based on what we call a cohort survival method. It's the most efficient, precise method. It takes into account the decline in births, it takes into account the migration. Its weakness is that if you have a very rapid increase in housing, especially single-family detached, it's slow to catch up. But otherwise, it's better. Underlying projections here, just to give you a sense, is that I am assuming that the decline in births in Minnesota and Washington County will result in smaller kindergartens, okay, that we're not going to beat that somehow. That Washington County's share of Minnesota resident births is not likely to increase in any significant way in the next five years. Okay? Washington County is interesting, because it has had historically very rapid population growth, but it has had a decline in births, which tells us something. It says that people who are coming to Washington County are later in their family stage, and that the Forest Lake Public Schools' share of Washington County resident births will remain near its current levels, and that competition will remain. So I'm not projecting more competition. So let's take a look at what's happening with births from 2007 to '21, which is the most recent year that Minnesota has reported resident births, down 12.5% statewide, 5% in Washington County. And then I'm looking at what's happening in the nation, because the US is reporting faster than Minnesota. And births were up in '21 ever so slightly, flat in '22, and they're again flat in estimates even early for '23, that we're not getting any bounce back. Why? Declining fertility and the aging of the population. So here are resident births, and resident births have a very particular definition. It means that on the birth certificate, the mother listed her address that could be coded to Washington County, Minnesota, without regard to where the child was born. So that's part of what takes time, because states then shuffle these papers back and forth and report back to each other about residents of state that are not born elsewhere. So you can see what's happened to Minnesota births, and births took a little uptick, they went down in the Great Recession, then they came up a little bit in 2014, but you see, it's been lower than 2014 ever since. We had a little uptick in '21. National data says not going to see any uptick in '22 or '23. And you can see that in Washington County, resident births have fallen from 2,943 to 2,795. So then if we look at the projections for the state of Minnesota for zero-year-olds or births, we see that there's a little increase in these years. I'm not certain that those numbers are going to hold, but you can see how incredibly slack those projected numbers are going out to 2030. Which are the birth cohorts that are going to put you into kindergarten classes into 2030s? Yes?
I have a question of this like here. Is there a reason for the discrepancy in the projection and the actual?
Yeah, that's the state demographer's office over projecting births. And which, and I keep that there as a reminder, and it started back in 2015 already, they were more optimistic about births than when it actually occurred. And so I'm not certain that these numbers might not be a little bit high as well.
Okay, that was my next question. Then have you accounted for that in the data you provided?
In the data I have provided, I've based it on the projections for Washington County. We'll see what those numbers look like.
Okay.
And it may be a little high. It may be a little high. Actually, for the decisions you have to make, maybe better a little high than too low.
Yeah.
Okay. That's part of what we have to also assess, is where is the greater danger of being high or low?
Yes.
Okay. So I say it's very flat. Okay. Now, here's, I have a pool. Births are reported on a calendar year, and you have to be fine by September 1st in Minnesota to enter school, so I adjust that, call it the pool, to get that number adjusted. About one-third are born in the last months of the year compared to the others, five or six years. So that's the Washington County resident pool, and then the percentage is your percentage of that pool. Now, you can see that decline, which occurs as these charter schools were revving up, okay? And then we get to 2019, before the pandemic, and it was at 13.69. Then we have the pandemic year, 13.54, not much different, okay? Then we come to '21, '22, with suddenly jumps up to 14.69. Then we have '22, '23, which I put in yellow because it's so low. Then we have '22, '23, which I put in yellow because it's so low. And then this past year at 13.26. So now, when I'm looking at this and thinking about the future, it really strikes me that anything above 14% is too high, that that's somewhere in the past. So we're looking in these 13% ranges. And so what I did here is I wanted to have two kindergarten projections. So one, I took the average of the past four years, omitting the highest and the lowest. Okay? Again, 13.50. And then average of the four years, omitting the past two years, which were both crazy, and we get 13.97. That's another difference that we'll see a spread. And longer term, you see that Washington County resident births have increased as a percent of Minnesota births, but I took the projections from the state demographic's office for Washington County. And it results in fewer kindergarten than the past, but here's what the numbers look like. I didn't, the report has the size of the pool and all of that, but we'd be here all night. So we had 362 kindergarten students in '23, '24. And the low projection is showing a little going up, but you know, not all that much. The higher one goes up a little more. Now, when I presented at the cabinet, they shared that 2024 is not looking real robust at the moment. So I don't know, you might not get the 366. And then a decision has to be made of whether that's an outlier or whether, you know, it marks that it could be a little bit lower. But these are the number of kindergarten students I'm going to be putting into the model. And as you can see, it's slightly less than were in the past 10 years, when there were 3,987 over the 10-year period. So the high one is very comparable to the past 10 years, the low one is lower. I mentioned this, net in migration, a consistent inflow at grade 7, and a percentage ranges from about 6% to 10% a year. The net out, and there's a net inflow at the beginning of high school. That has more variation year-to-year, 2% to 4%, but recently, 7% to 11%. Okay? And here we see the raw numbers. And you're a very interesting case because you had net migration even in the pandemic year, which is very unusual. What's, and you can see, look at these numbers, and you can see when the charter schools added grades or moved on or, you know, so that you can see the history of the numbers.
Hazel, I would point out that during '28, '29, '21, '22, we hedged on being open during the pandemic when others hedged on being closed. When the guidelines were you could be open, we were all. So we found ourselves open more than other districts in that, and then largely to, because we tamed our kids and the parenting condition.
Yep. And then here we have these numbers from grade to grade. And I bolded out 6% to 7% when you have that net inflow. And if you look at the numbers, 13, 14, huge number. But otherwise, really what's happened is it started since 2017, '18. You see that 22, 17, 16, 40, 24, 40. And at the high school, we're really picking it up in the last couple of years. And I think that's significant as you have home-school kids and the like. I think those, you're going to get a little higher return for the next few years because the high school diploma is still valued. And we see the net out migration, 10 to 11, that's very typical in Minnesota. And then there you saw the raw numbers. Here's the percentage. Anything over 1.000 is a plus, anything under is a minus. And you'll see in the projections that with the exception of the transition from grade 5 to 6, all of the numbers except that 10 to 11 are positive. And you see on the low assumption, we're putting in about 7% or 8% a year, and 6% or 7% between the high and the low. So continuing the net migration. And then I checked to see how much difference these migration assumptions make by holding the kindergarten assumption constant. And what this analysis tells us is the biggest difference is that high school, between the high and the low migration assumption. And I would recommend thinking about the higher migration assumption because it's putting kids at the middle school, really high school, that kind of a return phenomenon, which I think there's evidence that there are students in non-public and in home-school that probably will come to the high school. Otherwise, you can see at, I should say Ks, there's one student difference. Now, 10 years in the future, what I'm doing is thinking of it as marrying the assumptions about kindergarten and the assumptions about migration together. And so I'm putting a low-low, a high-low, a low-high, a high-high. And so what we see here is that K-12 enrollment is projected to decrease with one exception, that is, very highest assumptions, with high K and high migration. From those 5,615 students in '23, '24, could fall to 53, 35, or be at 56, 34, which is a 5% decline to a 0.3% increase. Why does enrollment showing decrease? Natural decrease. And kindergarten being smaller than the previous year's grade 12. And the projected natural decrease in these projections is less than that of the past four years. The net in migration is comparable to the past four years. Okay? And that's what the numbers look like. And then if we look at how you divide students by buildings, K-6, 7, 8, 9, 12, what this really says and points to is that if it's a little low, yes, in the first five years, you take some loss at K-6. 100 students, let's say. As you go out into the last five years of the projection, you're basically where you are today, or even a little higher. But that is not true for 7, 8, or 9, 12. So your projected enrollment decline is really concentrated, if you will, at middle school and the high school. And that's a pattern that I see virtually in every district because it's what's happened to births.
And this is, this is raw data, and this doesn't take into account new development?
Well, it does. I'll show you.
It does?
Yeah.
But does it, how deep do you go down on new development? Because I see we have a higher inflow of open enrollment. Does that take into account?
Well, open enrollment is coming from outside the district.
Correct. And we have a lot of new development on the edges of our district right now.
Yeah, well, we'll talk, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that. But point here, decline in high school enrollment. It's going to happen statewide. It's much written about the crisis for colleges. Talk about the demographic cliff that's coming. And that's because it's projected that there are just going to be fewer high school graduates, just fewer kids at that age.
Hazel, that's a symptom of smaller kindergarteners working and smaller grades kind of working their way through.
Working their way through.
Yeah.
Because in these numbers, remember, I've put in net in migration on virtually every grade except one transition. So it's, now, what could make these projections too high or too low? Well, too high, the projected kindergarten could be too high, or more students choose other options. Too low, of course, kindergarten could be too low. At this point, doesn't seem to be the case. Net migration higher due to open enrollment in. And/or if we have very, very rapid residential development in Lionel Lakes. Lionel Lakes is the wild card in this. But, and I don't have any crystal ball to know how the city of Lionel Lakes is going to resolve its decisions about. So now we need enrollment projections by elementary school. And I want to caution you, you have to use a little more care with these small enrollment projections. But there is one thing that's very, very clear. Here's the history since 2017. And overall, 10% decline, but heavily concentrated at Forest View and at Wyoming in the past years. Here are my projections. And I'll talk about them very, very specifically because they're significant. The projection of decline at Forest Lake stems from the smaller grades in Forest View as they roll into that school. Okay? Because while there are a few students who are not from Forest View, most of them are Forest View students. So Forest View is not showing that much decline in the period '23 to '28, but as the current students from there, or a smaller number, roll through, that has significant decline. And then Scandia. And the Scandia issue, we'll talk about these particular schools, is one that it would take a miracle for this decline not to occur. Because absolutely every indicator is driving down there. And then we can see the projected growth at Lionel Lakes and Linwood. And they're already two of your larger schools. And I think considerable pressure. So here I just want to point out a couple of things about the schools that have these large percentage points. Forest Lake, as I've mentioned, fewer students to flow into, and, you know, enrollment will decrease just because of that. Scandia has almost every indicator pointing to decline. It didn't have that much enrollment decrease from '17, '18 to '23. However, its share of the kindergarten dropped dramatically from 11.2% to 8.7%. And what that's an indicator of is that population is older. It just doesn't have people with young kids. Because we're seeing that trend over time, that we're just not getting kindergarten kids there. Furthermore, the age distribution by grade, the largest grade is grade 6, and the smallest grade is kindergarten. And it's almost a straight line of decline. So that means that aging out, students will be aging out, which drives down enrollment. And for Scandia to remain at its current size, it would need kindergarten rooms of 50 to 55 students a year, which we've seen a long time. So, and of course, it's already a small enrollment school, so it's a real challenge for the, where we have growth. Very interesting, Lionel Lakes Elementary only had a small decrease, eight students from '17, '18 to '23, '24. However, look at what happened to its kindergarten share. Went from 17.2% to 21.6% in a very short period of time, which again tells us the age distribution of families there. These are families that have young children and most likely even other preschool children in the household. And its grades are fairly similar in size, so everything points to growth, and it could be explosive depending on the housing change. Linwood experienced a small decrease, increased 15 students from '17 to '23. Its kindergarten share went up from 13.9 to 15.5, again, an indicator there. Its grades somewhat similar in size, a little more variation than in Lionel Lakes, yet the net in migration was pretty heavily concentrated in the past year. So I'm a little more cautious there. Yet I would say all indicators point to growth there as well. Now, what about housing? Okay? One thing I want to tell you, this is not 1970. It's not 1980. It's not 1990. It's not even 2000. Housing doesn't have the impact that everyone's had. Now, I've studied this in four states, primarily in the Midwest and Colorado. The findings here hold in all these states. I'm not saying they hold in Florida. I'm not saying they hold somewhere else, but they do really in the Midwest. Unit type affects the school-aged child per unit yield. That is, single-family detached units are the only units to get excited about. Townhomes, apartments, they simply don't yield kids in any number. Okay? And the demand these days is for townhomes, it's for condos have almost no kids. That a newer, single-family detached home will have more kids than an older one. Now, that's counterintuitive, but young people with kids either have money or they don't have money. And those who have money buy new homes and big homes. That as single-family detached units settle, if it's a newer unit, the yield will probably increase. If it's an older unit, it's likely to decrease. The market value actually moderately to high-priced units yield the most, who reach kids. And it doesn't, the high-priced unit in one district could be 300,000 and another a million. But it's still, kids have a higher yield out of those expensive units. That's counterintuitive. That's just the reality. And then, of course, we're building more senior units, no kids at all. And everyone says, oh, someone's going to move out of their single-family home into that unit. Well, some people do. But some of these units, in fact, in a high proportion, are often filled by the parents of people who live in the district. And the parents are moving from elsewhere in Minnesota or elsewhere in the country to be near their kids. And even sometimes to participate in, or, yeah, it's not as participants, but as audience for their children, grandchildren, sporting activities, and so on. That's the thing. So here are the yield numbers. Single-family detached, it's very hard to say what it is in any one district. I have some past data for this district, so we have some sense here. But townhomes, I don't care, we can go across any district, across all these states, it's Whereas a single-family home probably is going to go at least 0.5, some new Whereas a single-family home probably is going to go at least 0.5, some new developments, 0.6, 0.7.
Per unit.
Per unit. So you don't even get a full kid per unit.
Yeah, I was going to say, so if they build 100, 100 apartments in a single complex, they'll get?
You get 11 to 15 kids.
Students total.
Yeah.
It would take a massive apartment.
Exactly. Exactly.
Condos are even worse.
Yeah, condos. It just tells us something about the kinds of families and their stage of life development that are attracted to different kinds of housing. Now, if we look at this district, 2018 to 22, and I have 24 to 28 looking at it. We're projected at this point to have about 100 more single-family detached units. And that could yield maybe 60 kids over four years, five years. That doesn't mean they'll be evenly distributed every year, but it also doesn't mean they're all going to happen in one year. The impact of housing is if it happens in one year. If it happens over time, remember, these kids are rolling out, aging out, all the time. And a few more apartment units, but not whole. Then if we look at where those units are located, in the past, you see that they were primarily in the city of Forest Lake or Hugo. And the apartment units were in Forest Lake. You look at the projec, well, here's the point. While we had at least 639 single-family detached units, 36 townhomes, 452 apartments at the stock, yet the resident enrollment decreased by 408 students. Why? Natural decrease in the declining fertility and the competition. Now, as we look toward the future, single-family units for Wyoming started out, they were a little smaller estimate of the annual average, now a little more. Hugo could do more, this is what's planted and ready to be developed. There could be more, we don't know. Lionel Lakes at 194 is not counting all of Robinson Asad Farm, which is more likely. And we have about 61 units that are really within walking distance of the Lionel Lakes Elementary School. So my sense is you probably get 95% of those students. Now, Scandia, that's a number I, I want to say I didn't pull it out of the air because I based it on Metropolitan Council household projections. But there's, I don't see any way that Scandia is going to have 90 new single-family housing units in the next five years.
Hazel, back to Robinson Asad Farm Development, that is currently being considered for being put on hold? So we don't know the timeline for that?
Yeah, it's currently in moratorium. The Nature's Refuge, those 61, I, we think they're exempted from the moratorium.
We believe so.
That's what we think. And they're at the doorstep of Lionel Lakes Elementary School. And because of where they're located, I don't, I really think you'd get 95%. Somebody may homeschool, something, you know, but you're going to get the bulk of those kids. The Robinson Asad Farm, the current plan, at 434 units, it's controversial. 205 are single-family detached, 101 townhomes, 84 apartments, and 44 row houses, back to back. I don't quite know the concept, but apparently they're going to share a back wall beside sidewalks. So that comes up to 434 units. The piece that we thought might develop sooner, we don't know at this point. But that is the wild card. That is the wild card. And if it came on, it would put additional enrollment pressure on Lionel Lakes.
When the greatest potential enrollment comes out of the single-family detached, which are only half the units.
Yes. And they are in the quadrants, if you will, on Asad Farm. Don't have an equal number of these units there, each of them is different. And the lot sizes are different and so on and so forth. Bottom line, even if these came on, I'm not certain that it would make a huge difference in overall district enrollment. It would simply put a lot of pressure on the enrollment at Lionel Lakes School. And it does nothing to help you get students to wear your shortest jeans, Scandia. So basically, just to sum this up, we haven't had any growth in school-aged kids in the district, which is what made competition so, if you will, devastating on your enrollment, because you didn't have growth to cover anything. You have, it seems as though the share between Forest Lake Public Schools and charters is stabilizing. You've got net in-migration, you know, fertility is low, declining. So I would say that compared to, let's say, three years ago, four years ago, I would say the outlook for enrollment stabilizing, declining, but being a little more stable, is better today than it was three, four years ago. The issue for you now is something none of us have any control over, that's the number of children that we have. And we know that worldwide governments are not very effective stimulating persons. So that's the, so, excuse me, happy to answer any questions? Yes?
You said you've done this for many years, for many different districts in many different states. A question for you is, how often, or have you gone back years after you've done these studies to see how accurate your predictions were?
The biggest variance I ever had was in Hudson, Wisconsin, when the projections are made were just at the cusp of when development stopped. I don't know, you know, Hudson is an interesting community, they're kind of anti-growth, even though it keeps on happening. But that was, but as to the question, I just talked with one of my clients in Colorado today. And projections I made in 2000, based on 2016 data, 2017, projection for '23, '24, was 253 kids, a lot of an enrollment of 17,000. The rapid growth is one of the more difficult things to keep up with. Projecting decline, interestingly, it's not as volatile, because the factors that drive it are so embedded in that population.
I think generally your numbers have been pretty accurate, or this district, over the years.
On a previous slide, beginning your presentation, you had a bullet, bullet on there, what significant geographic changes? Is that the housing that you were referring to, or what?
Well, it's the housing, but it's the effect on enrollment. I mean, the eastern part of your district, you know, doesn't have very many kids. And you see that you already have a lot of kids on the western side of the district, and the potential.
This, this years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And like every institution where, I don't care whether it's elementary, secondary schools, whether it's colleges, universities, whether it's churches, things are built for the needs of the era in which they're needed. And no one can anticipate what's going to be 30, 40, 50 years. You know, that's, that's just the, one of the things we live with. We live with the history of what made sense at one time. And might not be what we do today, but we don't know. But here we have those, so.
I've found that a lot of my estimates are based on optimism. And your estimates have always been accurate, and mine have not.
Well, I don't see myself as pessimistic.
Right, right.
I don't see myself as pessimistic, but I hope I'm realistic.
You had said, I mean, this is everywhere, it's not just here, that district. I mean, unfortunately, we have the charter school competition, not everybody has that. We do the best we can, offer everything we can to get, attract students. And if you don't get them in kindergarten, it's hard to get them back. That is a really hard challenge. So, I mean, but you, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice if you had a magic wand to read the future and try to make things better. You do what you can. Yeah, Scandia is definitely a way to figure that out, that's your challenge. But thank you, this is a great presentation, it really does, it's validating all that you've been saying for quite a while. We've been seeing it already, so it's good to see real numbers, though. Thank you.
Well, I have a quick, so just a couple of comments, you know, this was all very thorough and very good. You know, you talked about like the three factors, and two of them, there's nothing we can do about, you know, the declining, or, you know, the natural decrease where the kindergarten class is smaller than the other, the grade 12 and fertility. So really, the only thing that we can try to work on is, you know, the competition for students with the charter school. So I think, you know, that's something that we're always trying to do. But, I mean, if we are losing 18.4% of our school-aged kids at the charters, and statewide the average is seven, I mean, that's obviously.
Well, you'll, again, unless one of those charters decides to close.
Yeah. But I mean, if we're trying, I'm trying to think about like, what do we have control, or like, what can we do? We can't do anything about those other two things, that's really the only lever that we could try to pull, you know? And then also, you know, talking about Scandia and that, you know, for a long time to build out there, you had to build on five acres, and they have some other restrictions out there in Scandia. But, so definitely, you know, we need some more growth out there. But then sort of on the other hand, you're also saying that housing units aren't really providing that many kids like they used to. So I'm just, again, sort of trying, like a paradox, like, how are we supposed to grow Scandia? Because we can't really build any houses, but even if we did build some houses, we'd have to build like tons of houses.
Well, I read the land use plan with great interest. And my take on it is that the entire plan is simply convincing people that you can have some growth without changing the character of your community. And if you look at the kinds of things that people in the community said they wanted, they wanted assisted living, they wanted units for older people, da-da-da-da. So you could increase the number of housing units, but if the desire is for units that don't have kids.
That was a Scandia land use plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's. And then the, once community, there's an adage in demography, once a population grows old, you can never grow young again. And so if a community gets decidedly middle-aged and older, it starts to attract more middle-aged and older people. You know, as opposed to young families. So.
Another question here. First of all, this is fascinating, I love data, I love numbers, I've talked about this all night, and I didn't get really into the details. But what I'm hearing, if I'm understanding this correctly, we expect, much the numbers we have today, to stabilize for the next decade or so. And that's what we should plan the next 10 years, or as more of a stable numbers.
Stable decline.
Yeah, stable to a slight decline.
Not a catastrophic decline.
Yeah, nothing catastrophic, and nothing catastrophic on the growth side. But I did hear, I spoke to a member of Christianson here, there is a risk for catastrophic growth, and that would be, again, something out of our control, being one of the charter schools potentially closing.
And I'm unable to assess that. If I, if I, if I could, I would be willing to share my thoughts, but I'm not able to.
I don't know if any of us in this room can really assess that, other than to get some data, some counts, and maybe, you know, plan for that lax one type of pandemic if it were to occur. I guess the bigger question I have is, more of a question for Dr. Massey than for you, is, do we understand geographically where this growth can occur? So when we look at our district map, we can, we can better balance, especially our elementary schools. I look at our elementary schools, we obviously need to break better balance there. Do we know how or where maybe some of those lines get redrawn to our district and our schools or?
Yeah, I guess what I would say there is, this needs a picture that there's going to be pressure in Lionel Lakes, some pressure in Linwood, not to the same degree. Steady Wyoming, moderate or steady at Columbus, and declining in Forest Lake, Forest View, and Scandia. And there's ways in which you can balance that out with repertory. And I have not done that analysis, but waiting for this data and let this data drive that work.
But the data is there, so we can start to do that analysis.
I would say that this presents really clear data for us to now work with.
Thank you very much, this is fascinating.
Any else? I really appreciate you coming out tonight and talking to us. And like I say, we've relied on your analysis of our trends and our populations for years. And I really appreciate the work you've done for us.
Thank you. I shared with Steve that I remember sitting at Forest Lake School Board meetings when the issue of Spanish immersion was discussed, that was pre the charter schools.
Yep, a year before I got on the board.
Me too. So that'd have been different. Well, it's, it's easy to, you know, Monday quarterbacking is always easy. It's not a matter of, you have to make decisions at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, do we have more scooters?
So, second?
A discussion? If not, all of them, say aye.